And joining me now on stage, I'd like to welcome all of the candidates in the race for Collier School Board District One. We have Kimberly Ann Boubier, Jerry Rutherford, as well as, excuse me, Dr. Jory Westbury. And in the race for Collier School Board District Three, we're joined by candidates Jana Greer, Kelly Lichter, along with incumbent board member Jen Mitchell. And in the school board district five race, we have Dr. Arthur Boyle, Jackie Kay, Timothy Mosher, and then incumbent Roy Terry, as well as Anna Torino. Now throughout this evening's forum, questions will be posed to candidates in groups based on which district seat that they are running for. But throughout the course of the night, each candidate will have the same opportunity to answer the same questions. And each candidate will be given an opportunity to deliver a two-minute opening statement, which before the questions begin, we'll get started with that shortly. And we're urging the candidates not to use their time to make any personal attacks against an opponent in this forum, as it's not really a debate, it's more of a candidate forum, an opportunity to get to know who's running. But just in case, if candidates do offer any kind of personal attack, then the person who that attack was lobbed at will be offered an opportunity to offer a one-minute rebuttal, but only under those circumstances will there be any back and forth. At the conclusion of the forum, each candidate will have one last opportunity to offer a one-minute closing statement. And we have our timekeepers here in the front that are going to help us stay on track for tonight. So whenever a response gets down to 30 seconds, you will not be interrupted, but you will see that 30-second warning sign. And when your time is up, we have a bell to let you know. So when you hear that noise, that means that your minute is up. And we also welcome our in-person audience here at the Naples Area Board of Realtors Convention Center, those listening on WGCU FM, and watching online at WGCU.org, news-press.com, naplesnews.com, and through the Facebook Live, through the Facebook pages of each of those organizations. So with that in mind, we would ask that anyone refrain from taking video in the room tonight. There will be plenty of video and audio documentation of this forum tonight. And we would also ask anybody in the audience here in person to refrain from any kind of booing, clapping, wave signing, or any other activity that might delay or disrupt the progress of the forum. And with that, we're going to go ahead and begin with opening statements. And we're going to begin with Kimberly Ann Boubier, who is a District One candidate.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Boubier. I'm running in District One. I am a proud American and an intelligent, well-informed citizen that believes in civic responsibility and taking action. I have a beautiful 16-year-old daughter with Down syndrome. I am a mama bear. I do not fight indiscriminately. I fight with courage and purpose, using wisdom, discernment, and common sense. I will fight for all students in Collier County, but especially for the 38% on average that are failing ELA in math. CCPS has 41 elementary schools. On the most recent FSA scores for third grade, 22 of them ranked below the county average of having 62% of their students achieving satisfactory grades or better. That is more than half of our elementary school third graders failing to score satisfactory or better in the Florida State Assessment. Shadow Lawn in my district ranks 41st, that is dead last, with only 31% of third graders able to score satisfactory or better. That equates to 69%.
That is our one-minute time. Thank you.
I thought we got two minutes.
Was that two minutes?
Failing ELA in math. We are still awaiting the latest results for grades four through 10. We can only hope that they improve from last year, because 60% of LaLley High ninth graders and 10th graders were failing ELA in math. I will maintain fiscal responsibility with the $1.3 billion budget and find ways to shift dollars spent on administrative staff to provide for greater teacher resources to address the 38% of students that are failing. I will ensure parental rights and education and keep woke gender ideology out of schools. I will protect students by supporting our excellent school security policies. I will support mental health initiatives that include parental consent. I will seek to better engage parent involvement throughout CCPS. I will restore the foundations of academic excellence and traditional values for all students. Vote for me, Kimberly Boubier, District One, the best candidate. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I apologize. I thought I heard a bell. I apologize. And Jerry Rutherford is also a candidate for District One. Please give us your opening statement, sir.
Hello, I'm Jerry Rutherford, running for school board District One. I've been your voice at school board meetings for over 35 years, speaking over 300 times at the school board meetings on your behalf. If I haven't espoused your values or your reasoning, it's because maybe I haven't heard from you. I've been there all the time. I've been speaking on behalf of those who could not or would not attend school board meetings. I was there when the school board and superintendent made good decisions and bad decisions. My voice for you was ignored many times because I was on the outside and didn't have a vote. And even when I brought 1,600 signed petitions from businesses and individuals, I was still ignored. I want your voice to be heard. I have a plan for reducing the budget, increasing the teachers' opportunities for promotion, turning the schools into a well-oiled machine. You say, "Well, that's a very bold statement." Well, yes, it is. True, but I have been on the inside. I have to be on the inside in order to exercise this, I call it a reasoning way of doing things, a principle. This principle I used when I was in life insurance for 20 years, and as a staff manager, my staff led the entire district in production using this principle. John Wanamaker, a steel magnate, increased his production overnight by using this principle. After 15 years on the, actually 35 years, 15 years seemed like just yesterday, and being mostly ignored because I didn't have a vote, I asked that you put me on the inside to accomplish the goals that I know will work. Vote for experience and dedication. Vote Jerry Rutherford, District One. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And our final candidate for the District One race, we're going to hear now from Dr. Jory Westbury.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. It's very important that we have your input and that you're listening closely to what goes on tonight. Why am I running again for the school board? I want to apply my experience, dedication, and love of education as a proactive board member to make our school system even stronger. We are a family of educators with deep roots in Collier County, including my grandson in middle school. And we all know how much fun middle school was. I want to support all of our aspiring students, talented teachers, and staff. CCPS has made impressive gains over the last three and a half years, and this will continue with positive, dedicated board members who can apply their experience from recent district challenges to the future. Do I think we can continue to approve? Of course. There is always change, but by working collaboratively, we will make even better strides in Collier County schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Westbury. We're moving on to the District Five candidates, and we're going to start with Dr. Arthur Boyle.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. Time, results, and conditions of our schools, working conditions of our teachers, living condition of our teachers and staff, those are the reason why I'm running. And it's time for some transformational leadership practices on the board. Our school board has been pretty much like a political club. It's time that our school board starts working to see better results. I don't need to tell you about the results. I don't need to tell you about the issues. You know them more than I do. However, in this election, we are not going to take chances with any candidate who's been there, running, or leading over, leading all those failing schools. It is a problem. We're not going to take any chances with a candidate, with candidates with no, with just a political platform. It is a problem, because we have too much. It is a problem. We're not going to take any chances with any candidate whose decision is going to be seen as a conflict of interest issues. We have too many to deal with, with our school board. So in this election, it's time for, we are going to consider what we need, what needs to be done. I'm running for District Five to serve, to seek, serve, defend, and protect the best interests of our students while aligning the needs of our county, the need, the dream, and the vision of our county. I'm Dr. Arthur Boyle. I'm running for District Five. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyle. We'll now hear from Collier School Board District Five candidate Jackie Kay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jackie Kay, and I grew up here in Collier County. I am a product of the Collier County school system, and I think I turned out pretty well. So when I look at our community, I think about an emergency room doctor as he triages his patients. There are some patients who have life-threatening wounds, and there are some patients that can wait a little bit. When I look at our school system, we're hemorrhaging as far as the student's mental health, even with David Lawrence, there's an increase in Baker Acts through David Lawrence. And the kids are themselves telling me that mental health is a big issue for them. Another hemorrhage that can cause death, not only to our community, our country, is also our teachers. Without teachers, we cannot educate the next generation, and without education, we cannot progress. And without progression, we will not have a seat at the global table. So my goal, as I look at the community, is ensuring that kids have the best quality education that puts them on par with the global world, as well as ensuring that teachers have the support, but also the latitude to teach. They went to school to learn to teach, allow them to teach, and to ensure that they are respected. But ultimately, I am for students first. I love those kids very much, and I will do anything in my power to ensure that they are safe and that they have the skills, education, to run our community and country when we're gone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And moving over to my left, but not leaving District Five, we have candidate Timothy Mosher.
Thank you. My name is Tim Mosher. I'm running for school board District Five. I started going to school board meetings a year ago, March. It all started with the mask mandate. I didn't think we should be masking our children. I started going to support that. I went to the next meeting. Come July, I didn't like what the school board was doing. I found out the budget was $1.3 billion. We had just over 3,100 teachers and over 4,000 administrators. I thought we were there to educate our children, so I want to know why we have more administrators and non-teaching positions than teaching positions. Then I found out our teachers are making 15% below the national average, and with the $1.3 billion budget, we should be able to pay our teachers what they're worth. I've also found out that almost 40% of a teacher, or the students, aren't working on a at-level education. So if they're not there, we're going to have problems down the road. Also, safety issues, they're doing very well with that, but we could always do better. We need to get sexually excluded materials out of there. Florida Justice Alliance has been working on that. That hasn't been happened. The President's School Board said no on any of this stuff, put warning labels on it. I do not think that's right. The superintendent right now, I believe, is running the school district. The school should be run by the school board. We're the elected officials, and the superintendent should be working for us. I just have common sense. I spent 30 years in the trucking business and put that common sense to work here. So thank you for coming tonight. I'm glad to see we have more people that show up for this than we actually have show up for our local school board meetings. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And Anna Torino, also District Five candidate. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming, and those of you that are watching on the TV, I appreciate that. My name is Anna Torino, and I'm a mother of six, two combat vets. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I whittled very young, so I'm very strong. I have a strong character, and I'm a fighter. I have two grandkids that, God willing, our school system improves so that they have a future. Now, what I want to talk to you about is our schools and our students. I am right now boots on the ground. I work for a nonprofit and I mentor foster children, but I also mentor other students that principals come to me and say, "This child needs help." Now, this is the issues I'm seeing in the schools. Teachers cannot really teach. We have different levels of students. We might have a child that's up here, but then we have exceptional students that need slower teaching forms or different teaching methods, and that is creating a problem because they're delaying the other ones, and these can't catch up. So those are one of the major issues I'm seeing. Also, we do have teachers doing other duties other than teaching our students. There's a lot of pressure for teachers, and they're losing that fire that they had. When I became an educator is because I felt the passion. We need to bring back that passion, plus the passion for learning. We need to teach our kids, not just put them in front of a computer and have them learn on their own with iReady and all these other supplemental programs that we're using. No, have the teacher stand up on the board and teach the students. Bring back the education we had and teach children to be problem solvers. We need to ensure our students are taught well, and they can grow up and be good, law-abiding citizens. Vote for me, Anna Torino, District Five. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our final candidate's opening statement for the District Five race is current incumbent school board member Roy Terry.
Good evening. My name, my name is Roy Terry, and I am running for school board in District Five. I have served the students in Collier County for 44 years. I have been a teacher, a coach, an athletic director, assistant principal, principal and school board member, and been board chair four times. Why am I running? For the students. They deserve a safe, well-organized, and effective learning environment. For the teachers, they need to feel that we have their back, and they should be able to educate our students without the fear of retribution. Our parents need to feel their child is in a safe environment and are being taught by highly educated and caring teachers. Our community needs to know that we are providing well-educated, patriotic, young people who will contribute to the positive development of their community. I promise to run a positive campaign promoting our district's successes, but also recognizing areas that we need to improve. My opponents have started some very negative and untrue advertising lately. If they think there are problems, my hope is they will stick to the facts and offer solutions. So far, I have not heard of any. Just remember, experience matters.
All right, thank you. We're now moving on to opening statements for the candidates in the Collier School Board District Three race, and we will begin with incumbent Jen Mitchell.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jen Mitchell, and I am currently the chair of the Collier County School Board. I'm a local realtor and mother of four traditional public school students here in Collier County. I was born and raised in Lafayette, Indiana. I attended Purdue University. I've lived here in Naples for 25 years, and I can tell you nearly four years ago, when I ran for the board, I couldn't possibly have imagined I would be serving during a pandemic and faced with all the decisions that we were. But I'm proud to say that our board put students first, and within two weeks, we quickly pivoted to online instruction. We got thousands of computers and Wi-Fi hotspots into homes all over the county. We distributed thousands of meals daily all across the county as well. And in the fall, we returned to in-person learning, again with multiple options for our families. We made sure our students had access to clubs, sports, band, theater, and orchestra, all those very important things. And the fact is, we got really good results. We achieved a record-high graduation rate of 92.7%. We outperformed the state in all 21 tested areas for the first time ever, and we maintained our District A rating. From a financial standpoint, we're on track to be debt-free by 2026. We're paying cash for the new high school to save you $41 million in interest payments, and we're the only district in the state to pass a tax-neutral referendum. 22 other districts went back to their stakeholders to ask for more money. We didn't do that. So I'm very proud of what we've done here in Collier County Public Schools, but we certainly have work to do, and I would say every incumbent up here would admit to that. And the fact is, I hear the question a lot, "How can you be an A-rated district when nearly 38% of your students are not reading and doing math on grade level?" It's a challenge, no doubt about it. It's our greatest challenge, but it's not a challenge unique to Collier. It's, in fact, statewide, that number's higher and even higher still nationally. But I'm confident we have great teachers in place that are working to meet that challenge every day head-on in our classrooms. And it's my hope to continue focusing on student achievement, expanding career and technical education, attracting and retaining great teachers, and maintaining strict oversight of the budget. I am a level-headed consensus builder, and I hope that I can count on your vote on August 23rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now moving on to District Three candidate Kelly Lichter.
Kelly Lichter.
Kelly Lichter, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Kelly Lichter, District Three. I did serve on the Collier County School Board from 2014 to 2018 and chose not to run for reelection. I wanted to focus primarily my efforts on the school my husband and I founded nearly over 10 years ago. We started the process. We have volunteered a great deal of our time to create what is now the top-performing public school in Collier County. It's ranked in the top 1% in the state of Florida. So when there's talk about no solutions, I actually would disagree with that because we have been a model here in Collier for eight years. And instead of the district looking at our success and looking at what we're doing, I mean, the focus has been on a great curriculum that doesn't change year after year. Teachers are able to focus on actual instruction versus all these other responsibilities that change year over year. We're very proud of the success that we've had at the school, and that's something I I feel very passionate about, as I used to teach years ago, but stepped out of the classroom to stay home full-time with my two children. I've learned a lot in the, in the last eight years, and I think what I bring to the table is that I'm a principled leader. I'm not a politician, and I stand firm in truth. And I will continue to fight for the students and pursue a much better education opportunity here in Collier. We have the resources, and unfortunately, we're not using those resources wisely. In my spare time, I serve in a volunteer capacity for a local animal rescue, and I volunteer and coach my son's basketball team. I am very dedicated to this community and hope I'll have another opportunity to serve the students in Collier County. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then we now move on to opening statements from our final candidate this evening, Jana Greer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending this evening. My name is Jana Greer, and I'm running for Collier County District Three seat. I am a wife to my husband of almost 19 years. Together, we have six children, four girls and two boys. My oldest is a senior this year. I have been fighting for education for over 12 years. I homeschooled her up until her fourth grade year. So education is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm concerned with our current failures in our system. I'm concerned that we are not America First in our classrooms. We have a 37 passing rate in our civics literacy tests this year in the county. That concerns me. It concerns me that our students are not graduating at reading and math level. We need changes with a $1.3 billion budget. I think that that needs to be focused more in the classroom versus administration. I'm running because I want to see those changes, and if I can't make changes from sitting in a seat, I must take a stand to help make those changes. In my life, as far as business and career, I have been in a variety of different positions, a lot of in customer service, but I'm currently a consultant in business and in commercial real estate. So I have plenty of history of operations and technology and running things and organizing and making sure structure and policies are in place, and I would like to be able to bring that to this district, to bring the structures and policies. Also, champion parental rights. We've seen parental rights be stripped away in counties across the state. I want to continue to see parental rights be championed and follow what our governor has done. I thank you for your time, and vote for Jana Greer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with the introductions complete, we'll move on to the question portion of tonight's forum. A reminder, all the candidates will have one minute to address each question, and we're going to begin with a question to the District One candidates on my far right, and we will be beginning with Kimberly Ann Boubier. And this will be the question. What do you envision the role to be of the school board when it comes to safety on school campuses and preventing incidences of gun violence, like we've seen recently at the elementary school in Uvalde, Texas, and the 2018 high school bash shooting in Parkland?
Well, I see our role as continuing to follow the lead that the district has already taken in this area. They have done a really great job of collaborating with the Collier County Sheriff's Office to make sure that we have lots of layers of protection for our schools. And they also, one of those layers is to have single-point entries, for instance. And I would always, of course, be looking at other ways, because the more deterrence, the better, to keep crime out, to keep guns from being a problem. But I do want to say that it's not a gun issue. And this is making sure that we have enough safety measures in place. And the Collier County Sheriff's Office provides that for us, and I would continue with that while looking at other things. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Jerry Rutherford, same question. What do you see as the school board's role when it comes to safety on campuses?
We've heard many things that were, could be done. One of them would be to arm teachers, in other words, they buy their own weapon, they go through training, they get in there and actually be paid for this, because that's hazardous duty pay. They get a monitor that would go to the guard if something happened. All she has to do is push a button, and he knows exactly where she is and what's happening. You know, that's, there's a lot of things out there. I've heard different ideas, and many of them very good. Something happened in the 1930s with my brother. Now, we're talking about the other side. What about the juveniles that need help? There was a situation back there that changed my brother's life. It can be applied today, and I would like to see it applied, but I have to have someone to go along with me and understand it.
Thank you. And Jory Westbury, same question.
I think Collier County has done an amazing job putting in safety procedures for our schools. Here are some. Kimberly mentioned the single-point of entry at all schools. That's extremely important. All the doors on the outside of the school are locked. In order to get into a school, you have to show your driver's license or an ID badge from Collier County schools. There's a video doorknob at the front, and you hold up your badge and you are, oh, all right. All staff has the ability to call a code-red lockdown, and after-school care and during the summer, there are drills in the school, and all students have ID badges, and additional training is given to school administrators. No backpacks at bags or athletic events. The windows are covered in the classrooms, and the classroom doors are locked in the building.
All right, thank you. And we're going to go on to another question, but as a reminder, before the end of the evening, all candidates on the stage will have had an opportunity to answer that question and all of the questions tonight. But we're going to go to our District Three candidates here, and we're going to start with Jana Greer. And this question. In late March, Governor Ron DeSantis signed into law the Parental Rights in Education Bill. You may have heard this dubbed by opponents as the "Don't Say Gay" Bill. Supporters say it's meant to allow parents to determine when and in what way to introduce LGBTQ topics to their children. Parents also have an option to sue a school district if the new policy is violated. Opponents argue it will hurt LGBTQ children, noting that LGBTQ youth already face higher health and suicide risks than their cisgender or straight peers, due in part to the marginalization they already face. As a member of the school board, how would you hope to balance compliance with this new law and what's in the best interest of all children in the district?
So to be in compliance with the law, we need to make sure we have a policy in place that eliminates any of that teaching through K to three. And then above that, it is to be grade and age-appropriate. So that policy needs to be made by the board, and then we need to make sure that there's compliance through our teachers and administrators in each school, that there's a clear policy that comes into play, that parents can report it. I would rather not face a lawsuit than handle the issue right at the board level and staff and address anybody who's going out of line from that policy.
Thank you. And candidate Kelly Lichter, same question. If you want me to repeat any portion of it, I can.
Thank you. I got it. Yeah, so as Ms. Greer said, it is through policy, and that's the school board's responsibility. We do need to establish policy. Anytime there's a statutory change, law that comes down from Tallahassee, we do have to implement policy. But what I will say on this, this issue is that I do not support this agenda coming into the schools because, I'm going to have to go back to my experience with Mason, and with that experience and having a really solid curriculum that focuses on actually teaching world history and American history, phonics, grammar, there isn't room in the day to bring in political agendas. It just doesn't have to be there, and we're missing out on educating kids and focusing on, on the math and the sciences, the art and the music, and so many wonderful things that have been left out of our curriculum. I just frankly don't think it's necessary to push any political agenda in the classroom. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jen Mitchell, same question.
Yes, so I just actually read a headline yesterday that the board attorneys around the state are sort of scratching their heads and trying to figure out how exactly this translates into policy based on what the different districts already have in place. We do have a controversial issues policy currently that requires principal permission to teach anything that's not in the teaching standards, which this is not in the teaching standards. So the idea that this is happening currently in Collier County classrooms, it's false. It's not happening. However, if a teacher were to cross the line, we do have policies in place to handle that. And I fully expect that our board attorney by July 1 will be able to apprise us of what that new policy will look like to ensure that it is in line with state statute, so.
Okay. Thank you. And we're moving on to our third question, and this is going to be for our District 5 candidates. We're going to start with Dr. Boyer again here. And this question is, how would you characterize the duties and responsibilities of an elected county school board member? And since the school board will be selecting a new district superintendent in the coming year, what qualities would you be looking for in a new superintendent?
Thank you. I do believe that our new superintendent -- I would support a superintendent from Collier County. Somebody with the knowledge of the environment. Somebody who is not just -- is not -- with not only the book knowledge, but the knowledge of the environment. Somebody who is ready to work for the best interests of Collier County without any special political agenda. That would be very important for us. And someone with transformational skills, ready to serve, defend, protect the best interests of our students, and all together with Collier County. That is going to be my choice. That is somebody that I would support.
Thank you. And Jackie Kay, same question. What would you consider the -- excuse me, the responsibilities and duties of an elected school board member as well as an incoming new superintendent?
Okay, so thinking students first. We would want the school board members not only to educate the families, but to also educate the community about what the school board does and how they can be a part of that process. And an important part of a school board member's job is to hire a qualified superintendent. So a superintendent, to me, would be someone who is not only inclusive, but is innovative and has a vision for the community, and looking at opportunities to transform education, especially as it relates to the trades, looking at opportunities when kids graduate that they either have a job and that they're able to support themselves and be a contributing member of our society as well as our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Timothy Mosher, same question.
Well, I'd love to see a superintendent focus more on the almost 40% of the kids that are failing. Right now, if you go to the school board meeting, according to the superintendent, everyone's great. Only about 10% to 15% of the people are great. I need them to focus on the 40% that are failing and bring those people up. Get back to phonics, basic education, basic reading skills, math skills, and just pull those people up and focus on that. I mean, right now, I don't see that happening, and that's where the superintendent needs to focus on and bring the community a little bit better, you know, closer together, and then listen to what the parents have to say, and then just basically work on our education system. That's it.
And Anna Torino.
As a school board member, I think all school board members should listen to the citizens, the concerned citizens, and the parents when they bring an issue up to the board. And I honestly feel that they should receive a response at the moment or within 24 hours or some type of communication, so they know they're not being ignored. I also feel that as a school board member, we need to be boots on the ground. I have seen firsthand how certain schools are not abiding by what we have written in policy, for a lack of a better term. With regards to the superintendent, I feel they should be someone that has had a position in the school system and knows the ins and outs of every single position in the schools, so they know what is needed for a school system, and be able to communicate with the parents and with the teachers and everyone involved with our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. And Roy Terry.
First of all, the duties of a school board member is to provide organization and admission for the school district, also to be supporting and reviewing the superintendent through observations and critiques, monitoring finances for the school district, listen well to the concerns of others, and to be able to work with others, because the school board is an organization that works together, and when you work together, you get things done. For the superintendent, I'd like to see a superintendent that works well with others, is trustworthy, knows the Florida law, which I think is very important, because law in Florida is a lot different than law in other states around the nation. I also think they should be organized and show that they work well with the community. I think the superintendent we have now has gone to extreme lengths to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now moving on to another question, and we're going to move back to our District 1 candidates. This time, I'm going to start with Jory Westbury. And the question is, data released in April by the National Education Association shows that despite efforts by the Florida Legislature to improve teacher starting pay, Florida remains near the bottom in a ranking of average teacher pay. In 2020, the Florida Legislature enacted a plan to increase teacher starting salary to $47,500 a year. As a result, starting teacher pay in Florida increased in a national ranking from 30th to 16th place. But the plan does little to help experienced teachers. Overall, Florida's average teacher pay ranking stands in 48th place. This, plus Collier County's well-documented affordable housing crisis, could make the region a difficult one for teachers to both live and work in. How could the school board be working on this issue regarding teacher pay and retention?
I couldn't agree more about teacher salaries. I think it's pitiful that we don't have the highest salary schedule in the nation. It's very emotional for me. We have a great school district, and we have great teachers, and they need to have autonomy, and they need to have the guidance and the instruction that they require. We have -- all right, I have to talk about the superintendent. The superintendent should have a K-12 background, advanced degrees if they are in the education field, integrity, communication skills, and works fairly with all people. Did I make it?
That's all fine. That's fine. You don't have to go over the minute. That's fine. Jerry Rutherford, I'm going to pose that same question to you regarding Florida's low ranking when it comes to teacher pay overall, and what, as a school board member, you would want to do to address teacher pay and retention in Collier County.
Well, I believe with a $1.385 billion budget, there should have been plenty of place to put the teachers' pay where it should be. In Naples, as you know, this is a very wealthy community. It's very difficult to find places, and I think that the school board should have put that as a high priority, especially when they're paying a lot of the administration very high salaries. I think that they could have put it in the budget to do better than that. And so I'm for teacher pay, and I believe that we need to do something about it. I have a plan. See, I don't tell you what my plan is, because if I put it out there, then everybody's going to know about it. I have a plan for increasing the teachers' pay, and so I'm going to implement it, but I can't implement it on the outside, and I'm not going to share it on the outside.
Okay. And Kimberly Ann Bouvier, same question.
Teacher salaries are not set for the community they live in. Salaries are negotiated by the teachers' unions, and our school board has approved the union contract every time it has been presented. I support good teachers. I support good pay for good teachers that have good track records and produce good results. We do need to do more for our good teachers. As a school board member, I would evaluate administrative staff positions relative to the ratio of teachers and staff related to running all of the schools. We currently have approximately 7,000 employees, of which 3,200 are teachers. I would increase teacher salaries whenever possible because I fully support good teachers.
All right. Thank you very much. And we're going to move back over to our District 3 candidates, all the way on my far left here for this next question. And this time, we are going to start with Jen Mitchell. The question is, local school district officials all over Florida are now engaging with the impact of new education legislation that allows parents to have more input in what sorts of materials are available to students in school libraries and on school media center shelves. House Bill 1467 gives parents and anyone from the public more access to the process of selecting and removing books and instructional materials. What role should members of the school board play in this process, and what metric would you apply to determine if a request to remove a certain book or material should be followed and then that material not be made available to students?
So there actually is a process in place that was legislated. Prior to legislation passing, we were working on it here in Collier. I do not support taking books out of circulation just on a whim. I think if an objection is filed, if that book is deemed to be sexually graphic and explicit, and believe me, there are some that are, that book should then be set behind the counter or in a back room, and parent permission should be required. I'm talking about books like Kite Runner, Angela's Ashes, some really great books that are required for AP learning. It's not for me to say, you know, the governor's made clear that he supports parent rights, and so it's not for me to say what your child can learn in their AP college-lit class or for you to say what my child can learn. The new legislation, though, sets up committees of community members, hopefully some of you signed up, to read through the books when an objection comes in, make a determination, present it to the board, and then we make the final determination. That's as the legislation reads currently.
Thank you very much. And Kelly Lichter, same question.
Thank you. I know this issue has become a real hot item for a lot of parents that are following the school board races, not just here locally, but across the country. Back when I was on the board, this was an issue. There was a parent who came to a school board meeting, and during his public comment, read from a book that was found in a middle school media center. It was so explicit and graphic. It wasn't even a read-between-the-lines scenario, put it that way. It was embarrassing. The board chair stopped the member of the public from reading further because it was so bad. However, because he had his three minutes, he was allowed to continue on. Ultimately, the board majority voted in favor of these kind of books. The way I see it, if it's questionable material, these don't belong in schools. We're dealing with minors. These are children under the age of 18. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Janet Greer, same question.
So parental right is definitely a part of my platform. I want to focus on allowing parents to have the say of what their kids can learn. Currently, Florida statute actually bans pornographic materials from our students. So that should not even be a question from the get-go. It shouldn't even be making it through our media center gateway. Whoever's selecting those books, there needs to be a clear selection process from the beginning, so that protects our students from those materials from the first place. Then we wouldn't have parental objections. Now, I understand from AP classes, there are books that have questionable things, and some parents may agree with that. I think a parent opt-in, if it has to be included, is an option, but being informed as a parent is ultimately what needs to happen.
All right. Thank you very much. And now, we're turning things back to our District 5 candidates. I'm going to start on this side of the room, so I'll begin with you, Mr. Terry, on this question. And it's, what do you envision to be the role of the school board when it comes to sa -- oh, excuse me. We are back to that question. This is the school safety question. What do you envision the school board's role to be when it comes to safety on campuses, particularly in light of recent incidences of gun violence that we've seen?
Of course, we all have to realize that safety in schools is probably the most important issue in this day and age on children's, parents', and communities' mind. It's very, very important that we, as a school board and the district, provide a safe environment for education to occur. Presently, we have an excellent contract with the Sheriff's Department that places deputies in all of our schools. I am not for providing guns for teachers and others in the schools. I think the deputies can handle that situation. We do have single-point-of-entry. We have -- all of our facilities are fenced in, and I think that we are pretty well-prepared with outdoor locks on the doors to take care of that and provide safety. I feel very confident with what we're doing here in Collier County, that we're providing the safety things necessary to provide an excellent educational opportunity for our students.
Thank you. And Anna Torino, same question.
I think what we are doing right now is great, but I honestly feel we should be doing more. If somebody really wants to cause the damage because they're mentally unstable, they will. The sheriff does walk around making sure all the doors are locked, but if someone takes their truck in and goes through the fence, nobody can stop him. So I am thinking that we should look into other programs, like the Guardian program in other counties, and see how that can benefit us. Also, that one-point-of-entry, again, if somebody really wants to make it into the school, they can shoot the lockdown and go in. Notice that only gun-free safe zones are the ones that are attacked. So we really need to revisit this question as to if the teacher already has a concealed carry, are they responsible enough to carry and protect our kids? Look at the response time for our Sheriff's Office. What is it, seven minutes? A lot of damage can be done. We really need to revisit this in order to protect our teachers and our students and our staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The floor is yours, Timothy Mosher.
Well, being in the trucking business for 30 years, I had a lot of places I went into. We have a turnstile. It only goes one way. I think all the schools need to have that, so people can get out of the schools, but they can't get back in. I've been to many schools where they have the locked doors, but if someone opens it up and leaves, someone else can come in. It's like going into an apartment building. That happens in numerous places. I've seen that at different schools, so we need to turnstiles to get in. Also, the Guardian program is very good. There's usually one, maybe two sheriffs, police officers, law enforcement officers at the schools. If someone's going to do something, they're going to wait for the sheriff to move to the other side, and they're going to start at one end. The Guardian program, if it's published, that's a big deterrent. I mean, the only thing that stops a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. So I'm for that, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Kay, same question.
Thank you. Since this is a systemic problem, we need a systemic change in -- change in regulation. I was in the military. Before you could even get a weapon or join the military, you had to do a background check. And before they would even put a weapon in your hand, you had to go through weapons training. So I feel like that should be a part of the process. And also, again, everything boils down to education. We have young kids who are playing with weapons, who are killing themselves, killing their parents, and we need to educate them as well. But again, school board members need to connect to the community, to provide education, insight, and knowledge. That's an important role that we have in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Boyer, final candidate on this question.
From 1970 to the last school shooting, we have registered about 6,000 school shootings right here in the U.S. That is a very serious issue, and that means we have failed so many kids. And our students, they go to school to learn, enjoy, and be ready for tomorrow, but not to die. Unfortunately, politics has been -- has been -- it's been more about politics instead of solving the problem. There is no budget to protect our elected officials in their buildings. There shouldn't be any -- there is no budget limit, I mean. There is no budget limit to protect our elected officials. There shouldn't be any budget limit either to protect our children. So I think that it's great what we are doing in Collier County, but we need to work closer with local law enforcement officials and give our officials the authority to act, to serve and protect our children. They go to school to learn, but not to be assassinated.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Boyer. And with that, we're going to move on, and we're going to head back to our District 1 candidates. This time, Mr. Rutherford, I'll begin with you, and this is a question that we have heard already tonight. But in late March, Governor Ron DeSantis signed into law the Parental Rights in Education Bill. It's been dubbed the "Don't Say Gay" Bill by opponents. Supporters say it's meant to allow parents to determine when and in what way to introduce LGBTQ topics to their children. Opponents argue that it will hurt LGBTQ children. As a member of the school board, how would you hope to balance compliance with the new law and what's in the best interest of all children in the district?
First of all, parents have rights. That's their children, and if they don't want something in the schools, they feel like it's not right for their children, there's a number of options. We homeschooled our last two children, but there are other means. We homeschooled our last two children, but there are other means. I think that when I was looking at the, wait, this is on the, repeat the first part of that question, please.
It's, you want, should I just repeat it?
No, no, it's on the, on the rights bill, right?
Yes, the Parental Rights in Education Bill, yes.
Okay. They do have rights, and I think they should be respected. Now, there's, used to be PTA meetings, school boards, they're still around. And why they don't get involved that way, I don't know. But I think that parents need to take a more active part in going to the school boards and PTAs and changing things. I think it would be much to their advantage.
All right, thank you, sir. And Dr. Westbury, I'll turn that question to you now.
Our governor has had insights into several good things. And one of them was to deter teachers from teaching about lesbian, gay issues in K-3. And that law was passed. And so if, if we allowed anything like that to go on, which we wouldn't, we would be at fault. So we're not going to do that. And yes, parents have absolutely rights. And the communication is important on a civil level, I would hope, to discuss those factors with us and have us reach conclusions, good conclusions.
Thank you very much. And Kimberly Ambubier.
I firmly believe in parents' rights. And CCPS does acknowledge that there can be no discrimination on the basis of race, sex, et cetera. They do follow state statutes. CCPS handles the issue of transgender students on a case-by-case basis, inclusive of student, parent, principal discussion, and determination of procedures to be followed. The new law that affects LGBTQ students will go into effect July 1st. This law will not permit athletes of a different biological sex to compete against each other or in the same sport. I am confident that CCPS will enforce the new law, stating that zero talk will be permitted in grades K through 3 regarding sexual orientation and gender identity. CCPS has dealt with noncompliance with teachers on a case-by-case basis and will continue to do so in reference to any LGBTQ issues. As a school board member, I will work actively to ensure that this compliance to this new law continues to stay in place. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we're going to be moving back to our District Three candidates, and this time, I'm going to be starting with Kelly Lipter, because you've been in the middle every time, no matter what. And so this question, again, goes back to how would you characterize the duties and responsibilities of an elected county school board member? And given that this next school board is going to be selecting a new superintendent, what qualities would you be looking for in that person?
All right, so I think the most important duty of a school board member is really to get back to focusing on academic achievement. I think if you watch the school board meetings, that is a major piece that's missing. When it comes to the next superintendent, qualities that I would look for would be a superintendent that is honest, has integrity, cares about accountability, transparency, supports charter schools, and isn't interested in self-promotion, rather interested in acknowledging the issues that are going on and coming up with solutions with the board. Also, I would make sure that this, and this is going to require policy changes, because a lot of policy changes have been made, to give up a lot of the authority by the school board members to the superintendent. As an elected official, we represent the people, and that needs to change. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Janet Greer.
So the school board is the policymaker. The fiduciary responsibility also stops with them. So our responsibility to bring in a new superintendent, who would be considered like the CEO, my viewpoint, it needs to be somebody who's been a parent or is currently a parent. Somebody who has honesty, integrity, who understands education, who has a passion for education. Managing and running a billion-dollar budget is a huge thing. And so we need to have somebody who's got the competency to help lead that, but also through the board's authority, because they are to be under the board.
All right, thank you very much. And, oh, yes, of course, Jen Mitchell, I was about to move on, apologies.
That's okay, thank you. So essentially, the role of a school board member boils down to the following three things: hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent, set district policy, and oversee the budget. That's really what it boils down to. As Ms. Greer said, the superintendent is in charge of the operation, sees the CEO, if you will, and we're the Board of Trustees. And for me, I think it's important that the next superintendent has a strategic vision for increasing student achievement. I think that person needs to be an excellent communicator, community-minded, as well as fiscally responsible. And I think it's really important, too, that we keep in mind that when this job gets posted, when the RFP goes out and we start getting candidates, they're going to be paying very close attention to who's sitting on the board, and, because those are going to be their bosses. And we're not going to attract great candidates if we don't have competent leadership on the board. So I think that's important for the community to think about when they cast their vote August 23rd.
All right, thank you very much. And this next question is going to, once again, be posed to our District Five candidates. And this time, I'm going to be starting with Jackie Kay. And this was that question related to teacher pay. I won't read the whole thing again unless you'd care for me to, but just noting, okay, I'll read the entire question. Data released in April by the National Education Association shows that despite efforts by the Florida Legislature to improve teachers' starting pay, Florida remains near the bottom in a ranking of average teacher pay. In 2020, the Florida Legislature enacted a plan to increase teachers' starting salary to $47,500 a year. And as a result, starting teacher pay in Florida increased in a national ranking from 30th to 16th place. But that plan does little to help experienced teachers. Overall, Florida's average teacher pay ranking stands in 48th place. This, plus Collier County's well-documented affordable housing crisis, could make the region a difficult one for teachers to both live and work in. How should the school board be working on this issue regarding teacher pay and retention?
So what I've been doing over the last year is advocating for housing affordability. So even if you were to increase a teacher's pay, if they cannot afford to pay rent or pay a mortgage in Collier County, that pay raise is moot. So what I would recommend is, as a school board member, to continue advocating for the superintendent, whoever that may be, to be online with creating or building workforce housing. We have prime property, communities like Miami, and California, as well as Colorado. They are building workforce housing on school property. We have enough money, we're going to be debt-free. There's no reason why we shouldn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Timothy Mosher, I'll turn to you now.
Well, since we do have just over 3,100 teachers and over 4,000 administrators, I'd like to use some of that money and switch it over to the, like, maybe 5%, start working away there every year, and moving it over to teachers' pay. And just work on that. I mean, we have a $1.3 billion budget. If you do the simple math, charter schools get around $8,000 per student. Collier County, if you just did the simple math, round it up to 10,000, 50,000 students, that's half a billion dollars a year. Our budget's $1.3 billion. That gives us $800 million to use for another teachers' pay and other things that we need. I mean, the money's there, we just have to allocate it correctly and watch it. I've been in the trucking business, we always have to watch our dimes and our pennies and see where everything goes, because it's a nickel-and-dime business. And we should be able to do that with the school system and be able to get our teachers more pay, competitive, and get them up there, and get the quality teachers that we need.
Thank you. And Dr. Arthur Boyer.
Talking about the working conditions of our teachers, I've been an educator myself for 18 years. I've been there, and it is, it is a shame that our teachers, our everyday heroes, are being treated just like that. And they have to depend, they have to depend on the union to fight for them and all that, which, and that is not the way we value teachers. They have done too much. And I do think that, as a board member, I would reconsider some administrative positions and some administrative salary also, because we cannot have the best schools, the best students. We cannot talk about success for the future if we are not taking care of our teachers. So it is very important to take care of our teachers, to value them and honor our teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Boyer. And Anna Turino.
I strongly feel that we really need to revisit the budget. I don't think it's an efficient budget. We need to revisit and look at the salaries that we all have in the district. We have a lot of allocations for certain items in the budget, which I wonder where that money is turned into after the fact it's not being used. So I really think we need to revisit it and allocate, move around the budget so that we can give teachers raises. I think the median right now in Collier County is, was it 108,000, the median income? Somewhere around, don't quote me, because I have not looked at it recently. But we really need to revisit so we can make it a place where they can live and be happy to be able to go into the classrooms, because that reflects on their character, and you can't work unless you're happy.
Thank you. And Mr. Terry.
A couple of things. First of all, we're going to be debt-free in 2026, which should allow us to have some money left to be able to provide that for more teacher pay. Also, we're having a high school, new high school open up, and it's going to save us $41 million, because we're going to pay cash for that high school. So I think we can find some money there in the next couple of years. As far as affordable housing goes, the school board at their last meeting announced a plan to use property down by Manatee to create housing, modular housing for new teachers coming into the district at a lower rent. My contention is, is that teachers can make the payments. The problem is the down payment. And if we give them an opportunity to move down here, live in a modular home, save money, they'll be able to save enough after four or five years to be able to move out. I thought that because we provide about 40 homes, trailer homes, on our campuses now for deputies, which is the same idea. And after about five years, they move out into the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And heading back to our District One candidates for our next question, and again, I'll be starting with Kimberly Ambubier. This question is about the parents and the community's role in selecting school materials. I'll just go ahead and read it again. Local school district officials all over Florida are now engaging with the impact of new education legislation that allows parents to have more input on what sorts of materials are available to students in school libraries and on school media center shelves. House Bill 1467 gives parents and anyone from the public more access to the process of selecting and removing books and instructional materials. What role should members of the school board play in this process? And what metric would you apply to determine if a request to remove certain books or materials should be followed, or whether or not students should have access?
The current school board members have been dealing with this issue since last October. They have relegated the discussion, solution, and process to Mr. Fishbane, General Counsel. An objection procedure has been developed, and currently, CCPS is seeking participants for the objection committee. And I, as a school board member, I would want to ensure that parents are a part of that selection process, that committee. Because parent involvement is key here. And then, I would also want to pose the question, do we really need these books in our media centers? Do they really add to the value of quality academic education? Do they enrich and add beauty to our students' lives? So that should be taken into consideration when going through these books.
Thank you. And Dr. Westbury, your response.
We presently have a process for parents to bring concerns to a committee. The committee is made up of parents and teachers, and I think some administrators, not quite sure about that one. But it's a good dialogue. There are rubrics for people to work on. And we're asking for whoever has a complaint to put it in writing, tell us the page, so that we can get the committee going and analyze those issues and get them taken care of.
Thank you. And Jerry Rutherford, same question.
And going to school board meetings for over 35 years, there was a time, many years ago, many decades ago now, where the banning of books and movies and so forth came out. If you remember, NYPD Blue was something that some felt should be banned. Well, I got together with a bunch of guys that were on both sides. We debated the thing. And we finally came to the realization that, yes, certain things should be banned. And I read some of the books that were here just recently. I wouldn't want my grown children reading them, because it had to do with suicide, murder, rape, and everything else. I'm sorry, but I'll be on the side of putting morals and values back in the school system, like the founders established.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Now, moving back to our District Three candidates, and Jen Mitchell, I'm going to start with you. And this is the school safety question. And what is the school board's role in addressing or preventing incidences of gun violence on school campuses?
So I think ultimately, our role is a multitude of things. It's budgetary, it's policymaking, it's governance. In terms of budget, ensuring that we have the resources to properly address the student mental health issues that come before us. In terms of policy, ensure that we have the proper policies in place with regard to the student code of conduct. You notice the Nicholas Cruz situation on the other coast. He was a student who had been expelled from schools. Collier County Public Schools does not expel students. We alternately place them, so that they're not out on the streets and looking for trouble. And then, again, with regard to governance, auditing our processes to make sure that we are complying with state statutes. The governor made very clear, it was his priority after Parkland, that we would have the resources necessary to have deputies in our schools, which, as you know, we've had for over 40 years, as well as to be able to address mental health needs. And so we've been able to use the budget to increase staffing in terms of school psychologists, licensed clinical social workers, and those types of things.
Thank you. And Janet Greer.
So the school board should be making sure our schools are absolutely secure for our students. There shouldn't be a question about that. What I would like to see on top of the student resource officers that are on campus who are armed, I would like to see more of a connectivity from a security standpoint within the schools, where there would be instant, either from video camera or in a call box, there's examples in other cities that have done it, there's an instant connectivity if there ever is an issue within the school, that there's a response, a quicker response time from our sheriff's department, so they can be in and address the issue. They can buy cameras, they can see what's going on in the system, within the school, so they're not hunting which hall is he down, what room, you know, trying to figure it out. Mental health is definitely an issue in this, in the country. So I think making sure that those processes and programs are being effectively used through that funding is important as well.
All right, thank you very much. And Kelly Lipter.
Well, I do want to give credit to the Collier County School District and the partnership with the CCSO. I think that's been tremendous in terms of safety. But a couple of things I would want to focus on, and this is policy, but it's about student decorum and discipline in the schools. I think our standards have dropped significantly, and we're not seeing this just here in Collier, this is happening all across the country. We do have to raise the standards of the expectations of the way students behave, how they treat their, their friends and peers, but also the respect towards their teachers. And I would like to take this a step further. Also, I think we need to ensure that our policies are in place, that if we are seeing red flags with a student, things aren't being swept under the rug, that things are being reported, so that we can identify students that may have some serious mental issues. I just want to make sure we're firm on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we're now going to be moving back to our District Five candidates. And this pertains to the Parental Rights in Education law. In late March, Governor Ron DeSantis signed into law the Parental Rights in Education Bill, dubbed by opponents the "Don't Say Gay" Bill. Supporters say it's meant to allow parents to determine when and in what way to introduce LGBTQ topics to their children. Opponents argue it would be hurtful to LGBTQ children. As a member of the school board, how would you hope to balance compliance with this new law, and what's in the best interests of all our children in the district? And Anna Turino, I'll start with you.
I think that that should be left up to the parents, when to discuss and bring up the LGBTQ, did I say it right? Thank you, subject. I do not think that is something should be brought up in the schools. There is a 4% of the community that is part of the LGBTQ. Therefore, I honestly do not think that that is something that should be discussed in the schools. If the question comes up, I honestly think that the child should be referred to their parents, and they can have a discussion at that point. But I do not think that that is something that the teacher or anybody in the school system should speak to the child about.
All right. And I'd like to move on to Timothy Mosher.
Well, I really don't like the 1557 "Don't Say Gay." I think it should go all the way through elementary school, have the parents opt-in, not opt-out. My grandson's going into the third grade, he doesn't care about anything like that, and why bring that up to the children? I mean, keep it out of there. I mean, keep it out of there, maybe opt in when you get to junior high and let the parents make the decision. It's the parent's child, and they should have the right to determine what they want. And that's pretty much it.
And Mr. Terry.
Yeah, first of all, let me say that we don't, in the elementary schools and middle schools, we don't have sex education being taught on either of those levels. We start sex ed in the high schools, it's the HOPE course, and there's about five lessons in that course that are, discuss sexual education. But two weeks prior to that, a letter is sent home to parents where they can opt out. So they know ahead of time that it's coming up and that they can opt out if they so desire. I think that, as I said, the agenda is not being taught in the schools, but I think we also have to realize that we support all the students in Collier County. When you're on the school board, you're not supporting just one group or another group, you support all the students. It's a public education, and I think it's very important that we understand that going in.
Thank you. And District Five candidate, Arthur Boyer.
I do believe that all students matter, they all matter, and as a school board member, I will, I will work hard to avoid any targeting policies that would create even more division in our school system. And if we take politics out, sometimes we make schools the learning environment that it needs to be, I'm pretty sure, or we will see more success, and people, and we are going to create a very much better environment. All students matters, and let parents decide, yes, parent to rights, yes, I understand that, and I also support parental engagement and parental involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Kay.
So students first, number one, the word balance. Balance means parents have a right to educate their children and have some input, but not to dictate. One of my biggest concern is for kids who have been sexually abused, whether it's in their home or whether it's due to sex trafficking. If that child shows any indication that something is wrong or they're questioning their identity, then that parent, teacher is required to report it to the parent, who may very well be that person who is abusing the child. So that child would be less likely to report any acts of abuse. So we have to be careful in the laws and legislations that we promote, because it could, it is causing further damage, and there's a report of more LGBTQIA students being not only harassed, but bullied and being told to kill themselves. That's unacceptable, so we have to have balance.
All right, thank you very much. And heading back to our District One candidates, this question again pertains to your characterization of the duties and responsibilities of an elected school board member, and since this coming school board is going to be selecting the next superintendent, what qualities would you be looking for in that person? And I'm going to begin with Jerry Rutherford.
You say what characters?
Yes, how would you characterize the duties and responsibilities of an elected county school board member, and what qualities would you be looking for in the selection of a new superintendent?
Well, for a new school board superintendent, I would be looking for honesty, integrity, ability to work with the school board. Matter of fact, I've been there long enough to see quite a few little scuffles with the school board and the superintendent. We need to have not only a good rapport with them, but they need to know what the problems are here before they get here so that they'll know how to attack it. So I would say, one of the qualities that I would see is, what would you do with the problems we are now faced with? And I'd want to have an answer for that. I look for a person that has a track record of their own, wherever they are coming from. I would look for a good background check and things of that sort. You know, education is important in the sense that we need to get rid of the illiteracy, and it's very possible to do that with the right kind of teaching.
Thank you very much. And Kimberly Ambubie, same question.
Well, the role of the board is to determine policies and programs necessary for the district's efficient operation after receiving, reviewing, and considering recommendations submitted to it by the superintendent. So we are the governance of the district, and then the superintendent falls in line under that. And I think as school board members, we need to remember that we need to work with diplomacy and have respect for our other board members, along with respect for the superintendent. We need to all work well together. Now, going over to the superintendent, I think that I would want to be looking for qualities of leadership, integrity, knowledge, loyalty, decisiveness, and initiative. I would like a team builder, an excellent communicator, someone that's good at building morale among her staff, community liaison, and a visionary. And I would like someone that's going to be focused on academic excellence and student achievement, fiscal responsibility, financial prudence, HR retention, and effective staffing.
Thank you. And Jory Westbury.
I have to agree with all of these characteristics that have been brought up already. I think that the superintendent needs to have policy and budget oversight, needs to direct the board into ways to improve and to provide the in-service and training that the board may need. The superintendent should have experience, a K-12, should have a background in education, have integrity, communicate fairly with all.
All right, thank you very much. And now moving back to our District Three candidates, and the question I'm posing to you is the one concerning teacher pay and retention. If any of you would like me to read it in full, I'm happy to do so again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Data released in April by the National Education Association shows that despite efforts by the Florida Legislature to improve teacher pay, Florida remains near the bottom in a ranking of average teacher pay. In 2020, the state legislature enacted a plan to increase teacher's starting salary to $47,500 a year. As a result, starting teacher pay in Florida increased in a national ranking from 30th to 16th place, but that planned is little to help experienced teachers. Overall, Florida's average teacher pay ranking stands in 48th place in the nation. This plus Collier County's well-documented affordable housing crisis could make the region a difficult one for teachers to both work and live in. How should the school board be working on this issue regarding teacher pay and retention? And Jenna Greer, I'll start with you.
So the school board should be focusing on giving a livable wage to our teachers. We need to focus on retention of our excellent teachers. Without a livable wage, we're not going to retain those excellent teachers. So I do know that our governor has done as much as making a minimum increase, but we've also allocated even as a district to give our experienced teachers increase as well. So if we can, from a budget standpoint, look at where we can move funding, cut expenses in other areas to help increase those annually wages, to give a livable wage to our teachers, that should be 100% the focus.
All right, thank you very much. And Kelly Lichter.
Well, I do think we have made improvements with teacher pay. I think we do need to go a step further. One of the things I would suggest is we really need to take a serious look at the budget and really audit our administrative staff. I know since I left in 2018, there have been several newly created positions, and these are very high-paying positions. One thing I will say is that a lot of teachers actually don't leave because of the pay. Many of them come in knowing that the profession doesn't pay as much as they should, but it's about job satisfaction. And when so many extra burdens and responsibilities are placed on teachers year after year, they're exhausted, they're stressed out, and they don't have the resources at the school level. And instead, we've got so many people at the admin building that are disconnected from the actual students and teachers in the classrooms. And I think that's something we as a board need to change significantly. Thank you.
All right, and Jen Mitchell.
So I could not agree with Ms. Lichter more, actually, because pay is not the primary issue when you talk to teachers. It's up there, but it's not the primary issue. It's exactly as she stated, which is lack of job satisfaction, heaping more and more on their plate expectations. One of the simple things that you can do as a board member is to not, is to send the directive, and I believe our board has, no new initiatives, not one more new initiative going into this next school year. Give our teachers a breath. And I believe the superintendent is abiding by that, and I'm grateful to her for that. In terms of pay, since I've been on the board in 2018, we have increased pay across all pay schedules, not just teachers, by 16%. And this particular governor has increased teacher pay more than any other in recent history, since I've lived here for 25 years, over $200 million in the last three years for teacher pay. And Collier County actually addressed the issue of veteran teachers, so we made sure that our veteran teachers got a bump when our new teachers got a bump as well. So again, we're never going to be able to pay them what they're worth, but there are a lot of things that we can do to improve, no doubt about it.
All right, thank you. And our District Five candidates, this question goes to you. Local school district officials all over Florida are now engaging with the impact of new education legislation allowing parents to have more input in what sorts of materials are available to students in school libraries. House Bill 1467 gives parents and anyone from the public more access to the process of selecting and removing books and instructional materials. What role should members of the school board play in this process? And what metrics would you apply in determining when or not to follow a request to remove a certain book or material from a school library? And I'll begin with you, Timothy Mosher.
Well, I'd like to see more community input. Just a few weeks ago, or the last session, they had some elderly, as what the newspaper said, people showing up for the school board meeting that got involved. And I think it's better to have people that don't have kids in the schools because they actually have time to go through and read the books and make the determination of what should be out there and what should not be out there. So I'd like to see more community input and have the school board listen to what they have to say and be able to review the books. I think if the community gets more involved with the books, then bring it to the school board's attention, and then they should be able to listen to a little bit more about what they have to do.
Thank you very much. Anna Torino.
Absolutely, I agree that there should be more community involvement, but the only problem I see is that if you have parents coming from a Hispanic background, how are we going to accommodate our Haitian community or our Hispanic community? How are they going to be able to review these books? So it would be magnificent if we could have interpreters or something while they're reviewing the books. Like this, it's equality for everybody. Every single parent in our communities is able to look at these books and make any objections if there is one. And as a board member, I would like to be involved as well and participate and attend and speak to the concerned citizens or the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jackie Kay.
So students first. One of the things I would like to do is include students in this process because they're the ones who are going to be reading the book, getting educated on the book, so they should be included in the process. One of the things I've done as a candidate is going into various community, connecting to parents. There are channel partnerships with places like Grace Place, the Community Foundation, Champions for Learning, that already have these relationships with the parents and the students. So school board members can attend these meetings, connect, and disseminate information as needed. So I feel like parents, teachers, students should all have a part in this process. And a metrics for it, it would be like movies. If you can rate a movie G, PG, 13, why not rate books that way? And that way, it's put in the appropriate hands of the students who would read it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Roy Terry.
Yeah, I think the school district has been listening to the community and to parents, and I would also stress that it's not just parents, it is community that can object to these books. But I think that we've got a process in place that can handle this. We've got advertisement out now for people who want to serve on that committee, and they're certainly welcome to do that. It'll be made up of community members, teachers, administrators, and parents will all make up the committee, and they'll review all the books and come back with a representative reply in terms of whether they should be eliminated or not. I'm against removing them immediately from the library. A few years ago, some people complained about the Dr. Seuss books in the elementary school, and I think that that would have to go before a committee, before you would take it out of there. So I would be all for leaving the books in there until the committee has a chance to look at them and make a recommendation.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Arthur Boyer.
School board members have to be community advocates, and as a school board member, I do believe that, I mean, not yet, so to come. I said I'm a school board member. All right. So I do believe that school board members need to be a community advocates because schools are a community asset. It is important that the whole community is involved, the whole community get involved, parents and, parents and teachers also, and students, and specifically board members, because we are the community advocates. We need to go out there, talk to people, get people involved as much as we can because we are the voice of the community when it comes to school board members.
All right, thank you very much. And that does conclude the portion of our forum today with the questions that have been pre-approved, embedded, vetted by WGCU, Naples Area Board of Realtors, and as well as Naples Better Government. So now we're going to move on to the portion where each of the candidates on stage today will have an opportunity to give a one-minute final closing station. And since we began with the opening statements on this end, we're going to do things in reverse, so I'm going to start with Jenna Greer, who is over here on my far left, and she, of course, is a candidate in the District, excuse me, District Three race for Collier County School Board.
Yes, thank you for moderating, I appreciate it, and thank everybody for coming out this evening, and for those who are watching on broadcast. It is important to take a note of our education system. We have too far gone in our country, and without educating our kids, who are our future, we won't have one. So I ask that you continue to stay engaged. I am a parent, a mom of six, I'm a businesswoman, I'm active in education and their education. I want to make a difference in our community for all of our students. So thank you, and please vote for Jenna Greer.
All right, thank you. And Kelly Lichter, I will never get it wrong again.
Thank you. Thank you for moderating, and thank you all for being here tonight, and if you're tuning in online, thank you. I just want to say that, as you could see tonight, or as you've heard, everybody sitting up here is very passionate about education, they're passionate about our community. But one thing that's very different is that we have different philosophies, we have different principles and ideas, and some are very confused, really, about their role as a school board member. And I've said this at other forums, but the school board members, we represent, we're the elected officials, we represent the people to the administration. We don't represent the administration to the people. I think when you're making a decision on August 23rd, you need to look at who actually has a track record. If you want the status quo and what's been going on, then vote for the incumbents, but if you're looking for some change, and you can't keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, so vote for Kelly Lichter on August 23rd. Thank you.
All right, and our final District Three candidate, Jen Mitchell.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Thank you also for moderating. As I mentioned earlier, I am the only District Three candidate with children in our traditional public schools. My only agenda is to ensure that the district delivers the very best education possible to all Collier County students. This district serves every student who walks through our doors, whether or not they speak English, whether or not they have special needs, whether or not they look like us, worship like us, or vote like us. The district certainly has its challenges with 54% of students who go home to households where English is not the primary language, and 64% of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. But these are not challenges that the district shies away from. I am a competent leader with the communication skills to build consensus and continue the forward progress of our A-rated district. It has been the honor of my lifetime to serve the students and families of Collier County. Please vote for me again on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving on to closing statements from our District Five candidates, beginning with Roy Terry.
Schools are a beautiful place. They're a miniature community of young people of all races, socioeconomic levels, religious groups, and political affiliations. The nice thing is, most of the students get along together. They care for each other and work and live together. For the most part, they have no prejudices. Those seem to really develop later. Schools are a wonderful place to work. It's mostly a happy place, except on test day. The point is, we need to keep schools a happy place, where students' minds are developed... The point is, we need to keep schools a happy place, where students' minds are developed, developing, and eventually released on the world. A well-educated and well-rounded student is the goal. This election is simple. If you want to turn the ship around, vote for our opponents. If you want to stay on top and continue moving in a positive direction, reelect the present board. I am asking for your vote on August 23rd. Vote Roy Terry. Experience matters.
Thank you. And Anna Torino.
Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you for moderating. I appreciate it. As you noticed, all of us answered a few questions up here today, but there are so many more that need to be addressed that we're not. One thing I do want to say is that, yes, we do have a lot of Hispanics and a lot of non-English-speaking students, but if we would revisit all the policies, we could possibly have these, these children make gains and be promoted, as opposed to waiting in a classroom to see if somebody will help them, that they're not being placed to cover a classroom or something else. I have been in education, I don't know if I said this before, for 15 years, and I have seen the spiraling down of education since back then, and it has not been, been addressed. There have been a lot of issues that have been mentioned in this forum, and as you've noticed, they've been around for years and they have not been addressed. It's time for a change. Vote for me, Anna Torino, for District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. And Timothy Mosheer.
I never in a million years thought I'd be sitting here running for public office on a lone school board. I spent 30 years in the trucking business delivering everything. Now it's my turn to deliver a quality education to your children. I have common sense. Everything that the school board's going on now is not common sense. I mean, it's a $1.3 billion budget, they're talking about getting teachers more pay. Why hasn't it been done? It's just, the education system's not working in Collier County, with almost 40% of the students under where their grade levels should be. It, it shouldn't be like that. They're talking about promising more, promising more. They've had the last four years to do that. They haven't delivered. I just have common sense, and I just want to deliver it for you. If, if they were doing their job, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. You know, just vote for me on August 3rd. There's lots of things we can do. The trucking business, I've dealt with everything that has come up, and that's what we're going to have to do with the, the education system. As everything comes up, analyze the problem, take care of it, and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And fellow District Five candidate to my right, Jackie Kay.
"Students First." As we see with national testing, students in 12th grade are actually less proficient than students in 4th and 8th grade. So instead of teaching and educating and inspiring our children, we are dumbing them down. So my goal is to unite the community, so we can have a common goal of educating children, making sure that they have the skills to get a job, support themselves, becoming contributing members of our society, but ultimately to be able to progress forward, to defend our democracy and defend our country while we're gone. If we don't train them, give them the skills that they need, they're going to be helpless, and this country will no longer be a great, freedom-loving, brave community and country. So we need to do better by our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last District Five candidate, Dr. Arthur Boyer.
First, I'm celebrating my 30 years in the U.S. and 30 years in Collier County. And I started it as a farm worker, and I am, here I am today. And I'm running, and I stand for transformational, learner-driven education, and special commitment to special education, parental rights, engagement, and involvement. And I do believe in transformational, community advocacy, and our teachers. And it's time to make, it's time for a change for our teachers, our everyday heroes, and it's time for us to start producing more high school diplomas than more shots, like we've been doing. In Collier County, we can, we can, we can, over 2,000 kids are actually attending disciplinary schools. There is no expectation for them to get a high school diploma. We can have more doctors in Collier County. We can have more lawyers. We can have more nurses. We can have more people like us running for this, to, to serve, defend, and protect the best interest of Collier County and our students. I'm Dr. Boyer. I'm running for District Five. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now moving on to our District One Collier School Board candidates, final closing statements, beginning with Dr. Jory Westbury.
I have a genuine love of education and how it expands knowledge. I have been an elementary, middle school teacher, Golden Apple teacher, assistant principal and principal for 14 years as principal. I've done curriculum writing, budgets, evaluations, participating in and leading various organizations with and without the school, with and outside the school. I am an addict to professional development. I try to take advantage of, of any professional development and knowledge that I can grasp. One of the things that I would continue to do is advocate for our students. I am student-oriented and have been since I was born. Vote for me on August 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jerry Rutherford.
One of our former presidents stated, "A nation that doesn't know what it was yesterday doesn't know what it is today, nor what it's trying to do." Says, "We're trying to do a few things if we don't know where we came from or what we've been about." Thomas Jefferson said, "A nation that expects to be ignorant and free in a civilization expects what never was and never will be." The founders had a form of education that gave them a 95% literacy rate, while the rest of the world was at 43%. They had the four Rs: research, reason, relate, and record. The founders placed a high priority on education. The Northwest Ordinance stated, "Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and means of education shall forever be encouraged." So they wanted schools, they wanted knowledge, but they wanted religion and morality, which we have lost.
Thank you. And our final candidate, also running for District One Collier County School Board, Kimberly Anne Boubier.
I am the best candidate in District One to bring change. I understand the complexity of this position and how to work with others to effect change. I have the diplomacy, confidence, and competence necessary. There is a great need for new governance, oversight, and leadership. The current board has refused to acknowledge the more than one-third of students that are failing ELA in math. The history of the current board has been to consistently vote 5-0 on the consent agenda, approving millions of dollars with no discussion each month. They have focused only on their accolades and ignored their failures. I will acknowledge the district's failures. I will offer solutions that address improving academic excellence for all students. I will focus the direction of the district toward getting back to the basics of teaching, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Vote for me, Kimberly Boubier, Mama Bear, and your best choice in District One. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. This concludes the, the formal portion of our tonight's candidate forum. On behalf of myself and everybody at WGCU Public Media, I want to thank everybody who came out to join us in the audience, everybody who's tuning in on the radio, watching us on Facebook Live, or wherever you are online. And of course, a thank you to all the 11 candidates we have here on stage tonight. There might be a lot of different ideas about what the best way is to go forward, but they obviously all share a passion and concern for the future education and well-being of the children and students of Collier County. Thank you so much.